So, onto the action items.
Um, so Mr. President and trustee Estes, before you, we do have two items that we'd like to work through this evening. The first would be our community room use and reservation policy. Now that we've kind of really entered into the post-COVID era, we have received numerous requests from various groups, some nonprofits, some self-affiliated, to looking for space to conduct business within the Imperial Public Library. We do have a, before you, what is known as the uh, community, uh, community room use and reservation policy. This is, uh, this was adopted quite some time ago, so while the provisions in it and the indemnification, we do think still stand, what we would like to bring to your attention and kind of work through with you would be those areas identified in the fee schedule. Just to be, just to be clear, fees are set by the city council, but this would take into consideration, there's, there's two fee schedules here, one of which does discuss the city council chambers, which updating this would be reflective that council chambers are available to other public entities, not for reservation through other groups. So we would like to remove the council chambers off of the, the room reservation policy. We would also recommend for your consideration that we limit the availability for reservations to nonprofit organizations. We, we don't want to get into a for-profit model where, where this is looking at some sort of supplemental income. I think it gets away from the purpose of, of what the library and what a public facility is supposed to be. So we put that forward to you for consideration that, that we would remove a for-profit fee schedule. You see that here at the seventy-five dollar, hundred dollars, that top portion, and so removing that, we would, we would then look at the nonprofit fee schedule. This would also allow for any group or entity that's looking to reserve the room, the room, they would be able to provide, you know, their 501(c)(3) or (c)(6) status, provide those articles of incorporation and, and insurance that's required by the policy.
Proposing to wipe out the, the for-profit top section, but also the council chambers rental in the nonprofit section? And why the, why the council chambers section? Just because this was made before this area was built out?
Correct. It was, uh, prior to this, and that, that definitely dates it. Uh, the expansion was completed in 2015. The community room and council chambers was one and the same in the previous library.
Chair space?
Yes.
From a legal standpoint, you should never make a decision related to who's renting based on their message or what they're doing. And so groups like nonprofit or making decisions about the time or the place absolutely appropriate, but saying this type of group or this type of group based on what they promote is something you don't want to get into.
Yeah, yeah. You want to make generic categories, so if the nonprofit is pro one and another one's against it, both are welcome.
Right. Oh, but, but your input is appreciated if there's something you would like us to look at, and, and we can always bring it back to, to the next meeting for the, for the, the board to officially take action and recommend. Then we can, we can do that. We just wanted to, to have that input with you.
Yes, as far as the, the refundable, it's a, it's a deposit. Uh, this is similar to when we have a family reserve a gazebo, for example, at a park, we have a, a deposit that we ask that's put down. In addition to if there's a, an hourly rate for the reservation, you can, in some libraries, you, that is all you have, is just the, the cleaning fee and just the reservation and, and all others are removed. So it's, it's, that's also a consideration to make. But it's just making sure, obviously, any group that had a activity or, or meeting in there, that they, they are responsible for making sure carpets and different things are picked up after themselves. Uh, would also be removed since there would not be a council chamber, yes. It would only be for the communities there.
For me, the, the prices look good. Based on my other thing that I've been doing with other clubs, it's not very expensive, and I think the community can afford these prices too.
You know, barring the objection from our theater members when they show up, I would suggest, you know, moving in, getting ready for us to hold on next time.
Okay. We'll take those, we'll take those amendments and then bring this. Stuff can kind of provide an update to some of the groups I know that have been inquiring about the room.
And this room is inside the library, right? It's four, it has a kitchen?
Yes. It does, yes, has that full-service kitchen in there as well. Yes, fun, fun one, no. So, uh, what you have before you is the recommendation on a new circulation desk, uh, circulation and customer service desk. The city has partnered with Demco, which is responsible for a lot of the expansion and renovations within this Imperial Public Library. We have done our due diligence in regards to the funding source for this project. I would like to update the, uh, board that the total for, after some augmented design work is actually quoted at fifty-nine thousand, four hundred ninety-one. This would expand the current circulation desk at the, uh, very front of the library to include a, uh, up to four full-service, uh, customer service stations, an internal book drop as well as storage. This is a direct result of the city's growth, which is why the source for the funding is available under development impact fees. We did do our nexus study that would allow us to utilize that funding source for that, and and we, we uh, the cost of what the proposed design is, is fifty-nine thousand, four hundred ninety-one. This is the design construction installation. And being that we are doing a work session, um, we are poised to take a brief recess. If you would like to see our current circulation desk, paired with this design, we can take a quick, just a little walk very quickly, if you'd like to do that. Yes. Yes.
How many people behind the red?
Four. Which is less than comfortable. Yes.
And this will be even more access for when people come over, they get better service because not everybody is used in the conversation with the next person.
Yes. We also have some limits in, in technology and sourcing at the circulation desk at the moment that we are not able to, if we have a, um, significant amount of patrons within the library that are looking to check out books or return books, et cetera, we only have, uh, one full service. I say register, but meaning that it can take both cash and card. And we have one that requires multiple login, so this would also streamline that as well, and so there wouldn't be a bottleneck effect. For example, when kids come in right after school gets out, um, just some of those higher traffic times within the library, we're able to accommodate all of our patrons that are coming in and provide a higher level of service.
It's also where the, the hotspots and the laptops and everything is shown up.
This does have a, uh, a four-month lead time, which means that the, the, the design would be complete once approved and authorized by the city council as an expenditure. We would put this in a production, and then from production to installation is about four to five months.
And how is this going to affect the service during those four months? How are we going to take care of people that is coming into the library?
Until the, um, installation is brought in for the, for the installation of the new desk, we would have to set up a modular, if you will, work area as this would be demolished and then installed by the group. Um, that can happen in a matter of, of weeks. It's, once it gets here, so just in that production time, it takes a significant amount of time.
I ask you because it looks like it's designed to be modular, like it's just, you know, like a jigsaw.
Come and put it together. Yes, it's, and it's more of the, the storage areas, which storage has been an ongoing, uh, situation within the library, so this also addresses that. There's a substantial storage area both on both, uh, pieces that would be coming in. It's more mounting that to the wall to ensure it's secure and, and all of those components, and then as it fits together.
Are you sort of addressing the aesthetic of having space age versus very old-looking kind of throughout the, throughout the library?
Well, I, I will say it has been slow but sure. But this would, uh, continue the momentum towards what is the adult reading section, which is located on the east side of the library. So this would continue that work that would be getting done, um, recently with the teen area completion, our sprout area, the juvenile. So this would just continue the momentum into what is the, the oldest part of the library, known as the Carnegie part of the library. And, and we would be looking at how to, we would be looking at how to address that area. As I mentioned with this, there's, there's a nexus to the growth of the city, so it makes sense. As to the adult reading area, there's some, some things that we have to consider, but impact fees are very limited in how they can be used, and so we just want to make sure that we, we meet that threshold for justification. Yes, it will, we'll name it the Marita Room, once we get there.
You're going to be swinging a sledgehammer if you do a demo.
You would, if you would like to.
Thank you.
Um, as long as, you know, for those four months, we can make, make sure that we take care of everybody, especially within the summertime. Yes, you're gonna have a lot, you're still gonna have the summer program, right?
Yes.
Move on?
Yes.
Move on to number three, uh, Imperial Public Library Programs and Services Update.
Um, Mr. President and Trustee Estes, um, before you, if you're wondering why the room is so full. Um, we do have, we do have our library staff, um, in, which includes, and I would like to introduce our newest member of Team Imperial. We have Elizabeth Louveo, did I say it right?
Luvano.
Luvano, okay, I apologize. She is now um, going to be starting as our full-time literacy coordinator. Um, so we're excited to welcome her to the team.
Welcome.
Yes, any, anything you wanna share or?
Welcome.
And also joining her is our library technician, Genesis, and I'm gonna turn it over to her. We also have our, our other literacy coordinators here that'll talk about their programs and our AmeriCorps volunteers, so let them all introduce themselves, so.
But my name is Genesis, I am the library technician here, and I will be sharing some of our upcoming library programs. As well as the previous ones and the, the most recent that we've had, so very exciting stuff.
Do we have the presentation? I'd be happy to share with what we, what we have here, previous, ongoing, upcoming, that's the word I was missing.
Alright, so as you may be familiar with our library partners, community partners here, we have the ISOE, they take care of our uh, early learning. Uh, programs, so they have uh, monthly programs every, with like reading activities. They bring in a lot of families who are very excited to share in those uh, storytimes, as well as libraries on the spectrum. They bring in um, storytime, sensory bins, blocks, crafts, that sort of thing. Once, once a month on Fridays, we have a lot of participation with that as well, as well as Raise a Reader where they have bi-weekly or weekly, depending on how it's uh, currently going, they have some staff changes over there. So we will be seeing their scheduling, but they also uh, come in the alternating mornings and afternoons to provide a storytime and activities for kids of different ages from zero to five. So just a little bit more on our libraries on the spectrum, um, on our busiest days, we have open for seven different families that come in. Um, they are some of our best engagement with the children and parents. And as we s- as I mentioned before, they provide all of the materials. And I believe it says here that we get about, when I was doing the statistics for this, we see about a hundred and twenty checkouts within the last month during that time period. And we do have some upcoming material that will be catalogued, so that people can actually check out and take home with them, which would be like sensory toys and materials. So we're very excited to get that going, hopefully, so that they can take, you know, that uh, libraries on the spectrum environment with them at home. This is our teen maker space, it's the Sprout Grant Stronger Together Out of School Time. Um, we currently have this one on a little bit of a hiatus, but the last one that we had went absolutely wonderfully. Uh, we had our teens, which are from here in the community, they will be providing programming for kids in our community. And they end up learning their leadership, they get to learn how to budget, plan. All these things that allow them to enrich um, professionally and socially. So we are hoping to get that going as soon as possible as well, as we do have funds for that to keep going. Uh, we also have our Thousand Books Before Kinder, we still have that program going on for ages zero to five. They get prizes at every different reading group, depending on how many books they uh, end up reading. So a lot of kids come in for those, parents are always really excited when they get to see it, and their kids are even more excited to pull something out of the bin. So we always look forward to those. And these are our library programs via the grant, uh, our new hire is going to be managing those as well, so very exciting. We have our California State Park Pass, which we currently have thirteen available. It allows people from our community to go to different state parks here within California. And they have much better access, so they don't have to pay for things like parking, which can often be a barrier. We also have the Zip Books Program, um, I'm not sure how familiar you are with those, but it really allows patrons to have access to books that we may not currently have at the library, they make their request, we purchase it, it goes straight to them. So currently, we have purchased approximately two hundred books since my arrival in August. We were awarded the fourteen thousand uh, two hundred and fifty, and I will talk about the circulation as we come a little further along. We also have our Creativity Days, um, this is another California library grant that we got. It focuses, or at least we are focusing on adult engagement here in the community. We're trying to get more adults to come in, get creative, learn what the library has. We're trying to offer them just something that they can do here in the community. We were awarded eight thousand dollars for it, and so far we've had four different programs for it. So some of the other grants we also have is the Growing Together Sprout. So this one is to provide a garden for our community. They would come in, they can get a little bit of hands-on, we're also partnered with Farm Smart, where they come in, they read a story. And they get to know a little bit more about our area and promote some healthy eating and early learning. I already kinda talked about the Stronger Together, which is for the teen internship. So as they do all of that, they also get a scholarship for five hundred dollars. So it's a fantastic incentive for them to uh, really get out here in the community. I've really seen how it impacted them, they're always so excited at the end of their programming, so it's really wonderful to see that, and we're so happy to facilitate that here in our library. We will also have lunch at the library uh, coming up, that's one of our upcomings, so we're excited to get that started. It is supposed to provide meals during the summer as lo- as well as activities for the childrens and their families that may be facing food insecurity, and also promote some healthy eating. So just to tell you a little bit more about some of the programs that I am a little bit more familiar with as well, we have the Zip Book Program. This was the one we were awarded, those fourteen thousand two hundred and fifty. We have about fifty or so books still pending that we need to purchase for our patrons, with more people coming in and asking every day, which is part of where people are interested, we get asked every day at the circulation desk about the Zip Book Program. So we are looking forward to getting as, you know, as many books as people are needing. And as for circulation, they are seven percent of our contribution to the circulation. And the next jump up there is juvenile fiction at thirty percent, so it is a huge portion of our uh, circulation. And I have catalogued over a thousand new Zip Books since my arrival in October, so we can really see that a lot of people are interested in this program. We also have the Creativity Days, um, we're currently looking to amend the budget so that we can include paying for instructors, which we have already done, so we're looking for, we already have some lined up, which I will get into in just a moment. But our feedback was, went really well, within a week, the community responded with dozens of responses. Um, both to what we had proposed and with fantastic new ideas, which I will also touch on. And we know that people are interested because we've gotten requests for these programs to continue, despite the fact that they were only being presented and planned as one-day events. So we're kind of looking into seeing whether we expand that. Alright, this was just briefly some more on these Creativity Days, because that's what we're trying to work on right now. Um, on the left, you can see what we proposed to the public, we had what programs they would like to see at the library, let them choose. On the side, you can see that this was the program interest, and some of our most popular was sewing. We actually had a sewing class very recently, we'll be having one upcoming on the twenty-first. We've had a lot of questions and interest about that, we know some people will be coming back from the other to finish up what they left off on. We also have, uh, we have Bob Ross, which is painting, and cooking, as well as candle making on the upcoming schedule. Some of the ones that we've already had included the origami, Puzzled Palooza, we had a crepe paper flower craft. The sewing classes and the poetry workshops are the two uh, programs which were requested for more classes, despite being one-day events. These are those upcoming ones, so we are hoping to see what people are really engaging and seeing if we can do any more of their requested classes, which include here just like a general overview of major interests, such as textile arts, ASL, and ESL, technology classes, and art classes and resources. Um, ESL and technology is going to be covered a little bit more with our literacy uh, staff, so they'll get into that. Okay, just so you can see that we had some of our programming already, has been going really well, there's our poetry workshop, and we had the sewing class. You can see some of our, like, uh, sewing machines that are set up, sewing machines will also be available to patrons to check out, so that way they can take it home and use. So a lot of the stuff that is purchased will also be added to the library collection, so that people can have access to things that are not just books as well. Some of the library events that we've already had that were held by staff and are not grant-funded necessarily, would have been, we had a Thanksgiving craft back in November. They made turkey, turkeys, they had pilgrim hats coloring sheets, we had a mini squash macrame that was provided for adults just before we were getting the adult grant going, we had a movie showing specifically for adults, because that was a goal before we started the uh, Creativity Days. Here's just some more uh, pictures of what's going on there. We also, a little too far, um, we also had recently our Dr. Seuss Day, where the kids came in, built a Lorax. They had a goodie bag that were had like themed bookmarks, pencils and mark, and erasers. We also had the puzzle piece Heart wreath for Valentine's Day, which was very popular. We had to add some more supplies, or we had to like create the supplies immediately as kids were coming in, because we did not have enough. So that was very exciting. We also have a scavenger hunt coming up on the sixteenth, it's to really help get the kids to come into the library, get to know how to use the library, to feel comfortable asking um, the staff, that they can have, come and ask questions, we're happy to help them at any time. So you can just see some of that going on, very happy faces there, we're, we love to see it. And then we also have our Story Stroll, which you might have seen outside if you're driving around Eager Park in Imperial. It's supposed to change seasonally with four different stories every year. In January, we had the uh, Tu Manita Malas, which was utilized by our literacy team, where they were able to take their uh, group out to read the story as it is. Um, it's in English, but we also do have the book in Spanish, so we were able to promote that um, as well. They were able to go out, enjoy the outdoors, and they got to do some activities, so that was really nice. And then we get into our literacy services, and I will let them go from there.
So I'm Monica Reyes, I'm the literacy coordinator, and I'm gonna introduce you to the literacy team. So I have Miriam Diaz, she does family literacy services, and then I also have our AmeriCorps members here, Maurilio and Tilda, that have been here for, since January, they started in January, and they've been you, working on getting their training done. So they're about to get ready to get started doing their literacy classes. Okay, so here we have um, the grant uh, that we received for this year. So we've been offering adult literacy services for fourteen, fifteen years now. Um, in twenty nineteen, we added uh, family literacy services, and then uh, just last year, we started with ESL. So these are our grant numbers that we receive, the grant done, award amount. Um, and then for, we have adult literacy services. So for, as part of their service, AmeriCorps members will be uh, explaining to you what adult literacy services is, what ESL is, and then uh, we'll have Miriam explain what family literacy services is.
Uh, so hello, my name is Maurilio Viegas, I'm part of the California Library Leaders, Literacy Services, or CLLS. I, I'm an AmeriCorps uh, library literacy, literacy member. What is the California Library Literacy Services, or CLLS? Uh, we and California Library Literacy Service partner with adults to enable them to develop their literacy skills uh, and achieve their learning goals and use library services effectively. Um, CLLS creates opportunities for individuals, families, and communities. Um, so h- how do we get our learners, how do, how do we reach those in need of our services? Uh, we promote through flyers, social media, or simply through word of mouth. Uh, usually learners that are interested come to, uh, come into our library, or call requesting services independently. Uh, this is not, for example, through a court order, or a family member decided this particular individual should be part of the program, no. Uh, individually, the person requests the, the services on their own. Uh, we begin by setting up an appointment with the learner on a day and time that is convenient for them. Um. Uh, so we do an initial assessment with the learner to identify their needs. Uh, we do this with our, uh, with our read manual, where the learner has to read from a list of words and letters. We have them read from a small story as well, where we examine their reading comprehension. And based on number of uh, permitted errors, we do, we, we have the uh, learner also take a small writing assessment. Uh, this will help us in establishing a starting point for instruction. Uh, we measure their English language skills, uh, we learn about the learner's background, interests, and goals. Uh, and we also identify immediate learner needs. Uh, so during these sessions, uh, when we're working with our adult learners, uh, we're, we're working on things such as phonics or phonemic awareness skills, uh, we're, uh, word decoding, uh, work on the four components of reading, such as alphabetics, vocabulary, fluency, comprehension. Um, so these activities that aid in their vocabulary development and comprehension, such as uh, word maps, close activities, strategic decoding. And we do our best to, you know, to make these activities funds. Uh, so there's like a sense of uh, belonging and, and community. When uh, you know, when students feel welcome and respected and, and, and they develop a sense of belonging, they're more likely to keep attending our class, and we as tutors, we try to create activities that build camaraderie in, in, in the classroom. Uh, so what additional tutoring services do we as AmeriCorps members offer? Uh, this all depends on the individual short-term goals and long-term goals, and which service provider we choose to prioritize on. For example, we help out our learners with their uh, job applications, with their resumes. Uh, we also work on their, like, if they're interested in working for their US citizenship, such as their questions that are asked um, on the naturalization test. We also help them to develop better computer skills, uh, you know, um, we also help them uh, develop with their, their conversation skills. And this tutoring is usually done one-on-one or in groups of adult learners. The California Library Literacy Services are learner-driven, so learner-driven services empower learners to find their voice and strengths and achieve their goals in, in their major life roles as lifelong learners, family members, workers, and community members. Uh, these learner-driven services benefit the individual learner, help to build stronger workplaces, families, and communities, and add so much value to our adult literacy program.
Very impressive. I'm actually helping the USA's people who want to become USA citizen. The question is, we have a lot of people speak Spanish, do we have anybody in the library that speaks Spanish that is gonna help me?
Yes, absolutely. Almost Spanish.
Okay, good. And then we have a lot of elderly too, that they're scared of taking those tests, so that's very impressive, thank you.
Hi, my name is Hilda, um, so like my partner Maurilio said, um, we have the adult ser- um, services, and that also includes the ESL, which is.
ESL, which is English as second language. So it's very similar to the um. Adult literacy service, just a smart um small um part that def- differentiates both. And so that is if it is a more beginning um English level or a little further ahead um advanced. So. The services are very similar, but um we provide a student-centered tutoring, so we focus on the students' needs and what their roles and goals are. So we start from there and it's no cost at all. And the adults are seeking help with basic hearing and speaking skills. Um the tutoring can be one on one and also class oriented. So we're working on starting that very soon. We just started the schedule for that, so we'll be offering um morning and afternoon classes for all of. The courses we've mentioned so far. And this improves their listening, pronunciation and conversation skills. So we're offering, um I'll have the conversation. In person and online. So if there is some people that are more focused on learning online or wanna come in, we have both. And the outcomes for this is being able to apply these skills into their daily life and that's academic and with employment as well. We have learners that are employed and we also have some that are not. So they're looking for that um extra help with the resume and anything on. As far as that process and this um. Literacy service also helps them become really confident and independent, so it shows them that they're not alone. They have our help and they have a lot of. Other learners that are at the same um position as they are and this improves their relationships with the community as well as with their family. It really shows in their face after the classes how much they learn and how happy they are. They're always so happy to have us and. Thankful that we're taking the time to help them and. One fact that we have here is that fifty percent of the adults in the Imperial Valley are below average in literacy skills. So I think it's it's really important even for myself and my personal family now um that they see what I'm doing to it. It really helps to just make them feel comfortable and know that they can come in on their own and. We have a lot of resources for anyone. Thank you.
Oh, my name is Miriam Diaz and I am the Family Literacy Assistant. So with family services, um family literacy services um built on family and commu- community strengths connects. And engages families with programming resources and each other, so adults can learn um. New skills and um successfully support their families also at home. Our services include story time as well as arts and crafts, playtime. And also we provide books to be able to build their own library at home. Um something that we decided to do this year was the story walk at the park that goes along with the story stroll. Um that was, that was a big hit for us um earlier, I think in January and we hope to do a couple more right before the summer co- comes in. So hopefully, and um another thing that we're also looking to do is um workshops for the family. And these workshops can either include something about like nutrition for the family or even mental health. Um some of the outcomes that have come from our services is to share books with family members, encourage pers- participation. In library programming and better relationships with family members. And also to be able to access community resources and um get involved within the community as well. Um some facts from that has come from family literacy services is interactions between parent and child within the first year. Shape brain development and necessary education um that leads to them to having success with. And um healthy relationships within with their family members. Um another thing too is programming really helps build a sense of community and identity as they learn. Um with family literacy services, I've seen this so many times, um especially from those who come from a a. Um adult literacy services and um they find this connection from the skills that they've um learned from. Adult literacy services to connect with either their grandchildren, nieces um or their own children. And there is like this instant connection where they feel like they can now understand, especially if um that child can only speak English. They like find this um sense of um feeling that they they too can um now communicate with that child. Um another last, one more last thing is um parents uh um. Parents included in family literacy programs reported improved literacy skills. And as well felt self- felt more self efficient with these um services.
Have some pictures here to uh show our adult literacy program. Uh we've had um events uh once a month where we have all the learners come in and we do uh. Like we, uh last month we had Jeopardy, so we played it for Black History Month. We had some questions and we had our AmeriCorps members do an activity with them and they played Jeopardy. They had a lot of fun. You can see the pictures there also of our literacy classes that we have in the community center. And then then on the next one we have, this is our family literacy services. So we usually have our programs in the community center.
How many people come to this family? It's like you guys have a big group. Average that you guys seen.
It really depends. It really depends. Um there'll be times where we have like at least maybe just three families come in. Um the most that we've had come in, I wanna say. Twelve fam- like twelve families in total? They're they're media Facebook.
Yeah, so I send out emails, because I, when I, they registered for the program. Um we used to have access to rec desk. So I had them register there and so I kept their emails and I created an email list. So I send them an email every time we're gonna have a program, so that they know that we're, you know, every month, every or yeah, we do it twice a month. So that they're aware that this is happening.
My guys might wanna like promote it to the daycares or preschools before, even the schools. I mean that we can have more people come in. I'm very impressed with the, with the Imperial Library is doing. I mean, everybody's very impressed right now with the Central Library, because it's huge. But what you guys do here is above and beyond what any other library has done. So I do feel like what we need is more promotion. I don't think we have enough promotion. Um I would just mention in Alexis, so maybe for some of those things, maybe we can have like a day at each school. And I'll be willing to go help you guys or set it up for you, or we can go in there and talk to everybody with the libraries. Is is not just books. It's more than that, especially for the high school kids that need a place to study and they they need groups and sometimes they cannot meet in a house. But you guys have that excellent run in there. But other than that, I mean, that's the only thing I see, but you guys are doing an excellent work.
Some part of the reason why our AmeriCorps. A little bit more outreach to have them go out to resource centers and things like that, so we can start getting the word out a little bit more, because yeah, we do. Yeah, so it'll it'll help us increase our numbers and more people are aware of the programs that we offer.
Yeah, to be honest, when you guys put the the book the on the park, right? You guys put like a store. I didn't know exactly where it was. I I didn't see any promotion on that. But you know how the bin holds something, spark all the kids to the park? Maybe you can be part of that and say, hey, let's go do a day where the kids come over and we go read the book with them around the park.
I've heard rumors of Cross starting something up.
Any way to leverage our relationships with ICOE's early childhood education for, to draw people into the art? Our little kid programs, our younger programs?
I see, yes, ICOE and and also just our our school district as well of of pushing out this information. And and to anyone that is that's tuning into our live stream, I I encourage you to to reach out to our library. Um we can, we can add you to the email list, the list serve that we have going, uh just to push out that information to you as well, but we're, we are, we are open. Um and able to provide these services, so we're hoping to to get some more traction with these programs through that, but. Um this is all great feedback and and great avenues to present the information to our local schools and and our county partners.
Have these grants. Reporting. Reporting on one day and twelve on another? Are we being knocked at all for having only three on one day, for instance?
So the answer is yes, our reporting requirements for all of these grants. Um as to having any points deemed or or knocked in terms of the amount of. Families we're able to provide services to. I do not believe so. It's making sure that we're utilizing the funds and the services and facilitating the programs within. The milestones we set. Um we do so conservatively, so anything above and beyond what we put forward. Um which is a huge credit to the staff you see sitting around here, because this is, this is their programs and projects that. Um they really take to heart and make sure that they are facilitated for everybody.
That's not even saying immediate, say maybe scoring on a renewal of that grant down the road.
I will say that over um and and I have to give a major kudos to Monica and Miriam here. Um but uh we have actually been able to justify increasing our funds over the last two years, two years? Or three, two or three years. I want eh each year, um where we surpass the milestones that we set for ourselves. And the state awards us additional monies each time, so as long as we can keep that momentum going, that's where and I have no doubt that we will.
Also, go back to that advertisement. I think we need to do something in Spanish. Everything that I have seen so far is in English. So I think we need to concentrate a little bit in Spanish to help that community too.
Onto section D reports and to uh staff report.
I think you've. Party of everything that we've got going on here from from the staff. I will say that we were just awarded for. Um twenty twenty-three, um the Lunch at the Library uh program for the summer. So we will be putting together programs for that. There's a literacy component uh to that program, um but we're excited just shy of of ten thousand. Um so we'll be facilitating that here in the library this summer, so look for that information to come out.
Onto Steve's reports, trustee Estes.
Not really reports, but only they can say that um with all these um items that we touched bases today and using that room. Be able to rent a room. Um most of you know that I belong to a couple of clubs. They are nonprofits, so I will passing all this information to my nonprofit groups to make sure they know and I know we're planning to do more stuff with the library.
Don't have anything to report, but it is nice to be back in here and hopefully we can be back on track. It's been a while. Um hopefully we can be consistent and now that we have a fully constituted board. And we can give you guys some decisions to take to the council. And uh I'll move for adjournment if there's nothing else. Thank you.